Because this is a Zoom meeting, I'm going to read a script that we have prepared and have used in previous meetings. So, welcome to the February 8th, 2022 Norfolk Planning Board Meeting. This is Walter Byron, Planning Board Chair. Please, please permit me to confirm that all members and persons participated on the agenda of President Jeremy. So, let's see.
I am here.
Members and persons participate on the agenda of President Jeremy. So, let's see.
I am here.
Members and cases participate on the agenda of President Jeremy. So, let's see.
I am here.
Members and cases participate on the agenda of President Jeremy. So.
Again.
Please permit me here.
Members and cases participate on the agenda of President Jeremy. So.
Yeah.
Please permit me here.
Members and cases.
What's that?
Hey, Andrew, are you there? Andrew, are you there?
I think we heard from Chad a few times.
I think Chad's here.
Chad, are you there?
He's here.
Okay.
Present.
Do we need to go now, huh?
That was, that was a nice little loop.
Yeah, it wasn't a new thing. All right, so we have Chad, we have Mr. Weddleton with us.
Here.
And Mr. Monfert.
Here, 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 here.
Mr. Thurl is with us. And Mr. Sullivan, who is, need to zip out a little bit, I guess, but he'll be back.
The President, yeah.
All right, and Betsy's with us. And our town planner, Rich McCarthy is with us. And we also have Phil Paratus from Beta. Welcome, Phil.
Thurl is with us.
Hello, guys.
Sullivan, who is, need to zip out a little bit, I guess, but he'll be back.
We've got to hear that feedback again.
And Betsy's with us. And our town planner, Rich McCarthy is with us. And we also have Phil Paratus from Beta. Welcome, Phil.
Thurl is with us.
Hello, guys.
Sullivan, who is, need to zip out a little bit, I guess, but he'll be back.
Oh, we've got to hear that feedback again.
And Betsy's with us.
Brown Hogs Day was last week.
And we also have Phil Paratus from Beta. Welcome, Phil.
Hello, guys.
Sullivan, who is, need to zip out a little bit, I guess, but he'll be back.
We've got to hear that feedback again.
And Betsy's with us.
Brown Hogs Day was last week.
And we also have Phil Paratus from Beta. Welcome, Phil.
Phil, are you here?
Oh, no.
Brown Hogs Day was last week.
How do we get rid of that?
No, yeah.
Oh, no.
Everybody needs to go on mute.
Okay.
Now, we can unmute one at a time.
Okay. Well, I killed it, but let's hope it doesn't come back.
I'm good. Yeah, sounds good.
So far, so good, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, all right. So, good evening. The, this open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID virus, we have an advisory directed by the Commonwealth that we may suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of, of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website, with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not necessarily ensure public participation. However, this meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening via the Zoom application as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer because anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Also, I would say that any vote we take this evening will be done by roll call vote. And with that said, we can begin to address the agenda items. The first item on our agenda this evening is a review of the 90 to 100 Pond Street and 12 Sharon Ave Site Plan Approval and Stormwater Management Permit for Proposed Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Botanic System, continued from January 11. Who is here to speak to that? Rich, you want to take it?
Rich, I think is having some technical difficulties. He's going to log off and then come back again. So, we can, um.
Daniel Cerberus here with NextGrid. Me and Brian Yergeson from BSC Associates. We're ready to kind of talk about the project and where, where we've come from. I'm a bit out of the loop. I've been on, I've been on leave for about a month here. But Brian and his team have worked real hard. Todd McDonald is also on this call to address all of Beta Group's comments. And I'm going to let Brian talk here. We were really hoping to get a vote tonight, and the reason that we'd like to push a vote tonight is because the Massachusetts Smart Program right now is in Block 6, and it's on the verge of going to Block 7. If we don't get a signed agreement now, it could cost a lot of money. And all the, you know, RFPs that we answered for the town were based on a Block 5 or Block 6 allocation. We really don't want to push this to where we're going to have to reassess the, the value of the project. So, just wanted you guys to keep that in mind if we can make an effort to just accept, or what, we'll, we'll come to that later. Let me, let me let Brian talk here.
Well, I just would say that while we're tuning up, Brian, that it, it really isn't helpful to get your response to Beta minutes before the meeting. I mean, that doesn't, doesn't really give us a chance to read it, to review it, to figure out where you comply with Beta, to give Beta a chance to digest it. So that the, we, we may be able to plow our way through it, but your expectation of a, of a decision tonight may be premature. That's all I want to say.
Why was this, with, with a deadline being put on the planning board, we have a 16-page peer review, why wasn't the project started earlier? Why are you putting the onus on us?
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of things in this review that I have questions on. I see this being a lengthy meeting.
Understood.
I don't think your approach, I don't think your approach is cool, to be honest with you, Daniel. Don't put the burden on, we haven't held anything up.
Oh, I know you guys have, and absolutely, you guys have been wonderful. That was not my intention whatsoever. Just, just wanted to let you know that we're a, a bit under the gun because of the Massachusetts Smart Program. Hopefully, you know, nobody's problem. Just wanted to let you guys know that that was our, our hope for tonight. If, if it doesn't go that way, you know, we're not going to be upset with you guys. I'm sorry if that's how it came across.
Fair, fair enough. Well, we have this Beta letter, and in the absence of having your response, I was prepared to go through the Beta letter. Much has been resolved, but there were quite a few things that were still open, many of which were left to the discretion of the board for Beta's recommendation. So, one, one way to proceed would be to plow our way through the Beta letter and using your letter as a reference to solution to each of the issues that Beta has raised. However, Brian is raising his hand and wishes to speak. So, why don't we let him speak and then we'll see how we proceed from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Brian Yergeson. I'm a professional engineer with BSC Group, for the record, and here on behalf of NextGrid, a, as well as the town in, in this joint venture. We were last before you, the, the only time we were before you to introduce the project briefly was December 14th public hearing. And since that time, we had, we have met with town staff, we've met with Phil Paratus from Beta Group. We've responded to all of the comments that we received from the, from the original peer review letter that Beta prepared, as well as those comments which we received outside public hearing from town staff. We, subsequently, we submitted a, a brand-new package of revised drawings and documentation, as well as our formal responses to Beta Group on January 31st of this year. Beta turned that around a few days later and provided a second response, a follow-up response to our response. So, and, and even more recent than that, this evening, I forwarded our response to the Beta response of our response to the town. So, to address, Mr. Chairman, you were concerned that we didn't respond in time. We actually responded with plenty of time, as we had discussed with the town planner ahead of time and Beta Group, to ensure that Beta would have time to provide the review. And, and they did. And so, I, I think it's progressing pretty nicely. As, as you stated, you had, we had boiled it down to 12 outstanding items, none of which we had an issue with. We, and all that we were, were basically agreeing with everything that was there. I'm sure you're going to have questions, so rather than me go through each of those 12 outstanding items and, and share the response, maybe it would be more efficient if we just went through and addressed your specific questions. But I, I think we're very close to the, to being there. And perhaps even, maybe it would be helpful to hear from, from Beta Group before we even proceed any further. Just kind of give us a point of reference from the town's perspective of where we're at with the project.
Well, the voting members of this.
Fair enough. Go, go ahead, Phil, if you wish to make a statement. But my plan at this point would be to take the, the Beta response dated February 3rd and walk our way through it, looking at the issues that remain, which you feel you probably have addressed in your letter we received this evening. So, maybe we can make our significant progress this evening.
Well, can we, can we screen share that letter? Can we screen share that letter?
I'm sure we can. Richard, Rich may have it, that he can screen share.
There were a number of, there were a number of things in there that deserved comments and input.
You're referring to the Beta letter of February 3rd, John?
Yes, and the letter that I got 20 minutes ago really doesn't give me time to go through it and cross-match it and see what's what. So, I don't know what they're expecting, but I would like to go through Beta's peer review letter one by one. And if some of these things have already been resolved, then so be it.
Yep, agreed. I, I, I'm, I'm on the same wavelength as you are. So, Rich, if you can share that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll, I'm just getting now screen share in a second here and so everybody see the February 3rd letter on the screen?
There we go, right. If you were to scroll to page 2, please. Sure. I think down the bottom in W1, we have the first open issue, if you will, which may not be a big issue, but Beta requested, potential required waivers are discussed in this update. Beta recommends the applicant provide a comprehensive list of waivers requested to facilitate discussion with the planning board. The requested waivers should be noted on the title sheet of the plan set, which is true. So, do we have a, a list of those waivers in your letter this evening?
No, they're not. They're, some of them were, the resolution of some of the items was just found out, you know, days ago. But that is one of the items which, you know, clearly, that's something we're going to provide. We need to boil it down, go through the list. It's really important that we don't miss any, so I'm not going to rush it to get it out, but, you know, we're going to address it timely.
Okay, understood. So, that's an open item, fair enough. All right, as I move through the, the, the letter, the next open item looks like it's on page 4 at the top, Rich. Okay, so it says the row of solar modules are designed with, with over 12 feet of separation, which allows for a brush truck or pickup truck to drive between the rows. BSC has discussed this with Chief Kenny, Norfolk Fire Department. He is amenable to this approach. Beta defers to the town fire department. Rich, we need a, a statement from the chief in writing that says he's okay with that.
Yeah, I thought we, uh, I'd already had, had that. Here we go.
If so, Beta is not aware of it, or he, or check this off as an issue result.
Fair point. Let me, uh, okay. F4, similar, yeah.
Okay, then dropping down F4.
Same thing.
Same thing, right. Same issue, right. Okay, then scrolling down to F6. It says, initial, location signs required by, provided prior to attending Bill Chris. Presumably, Bob Bullock has a set of requirements as to where the signs are, are required to be posted.
Yeah, so this, I, I have spoken about, about this. This is more in terms of the Norfolk's sign bylaw says that you can't put a, a sign on a fence or a wall. However, you know, discussions with Bob, you know, because we have such a broad definition of what a sign is, you know, it's this catch-all, but in this case, in similar things where, where it's a requirement, he's not going to, he doesn't view it at the same lens.
Well, that's true, and, and this is not our first solar array, so we must have faced this issue at least two or three times before as a town. And Bob must have come to some agreement as to how he'll, wants the signs posted, right?
Yeah, no.
Walter, again, we're talking about a bylaw here. We don't have the right to waiver on a bylaw. If it's a sign, it must comply with the bylaw.
True, and Bob is our interpreter, enforcer of zoning bylaws. So presumably, he has figured out how to have these gentlemen and, and, and previous gentlemen with other solar arrays, Ray Fields, comply with the bylaw, right? I, I would think.
Yes.
So, we, we defer to Bob on that, and that should get resolved easily. All right, moving along, page 5 at the top. Okay, it says the operating and maintenance plan needs to be provided, and apparently, that's still an open issue.
And don't, that is an open issue.
Okay, still an open issue, fair enough. Okay, I'm moving down to F9.
Brian's hand is up.
Yeah. As I recall in our last discussion, Brian, we requested that you provided drawing showing the, the extent of the tree clearing, and I don't know whether that drawing has been made available to Rich or not.
Sure, I was at, my hand was actually at, Mr. Chairman, just to address the, the prior one. I didn't get a chance to respond.
Oh, go ahead.
For a point.
Please go ahead.
I'm sorry, just for a point of clarification, we did, we have provided an operation and maintenance plan. However, there was some additional information which Beta requested be incorporated into the plan, which we have not done so yet, but will do so.
Got you. Okay, thank you. All right, now to the tree clearing issue. We had, one of our members had requested that, that you provided drawing demonstrating where the tree cut line was going to be. Do we have that yet?
Well, the proposed limits of tree clearing are shown on the site plans.
They are. All right, Rich, could we, could we take a side street here and put up that drawing so we can discuss that for a minute?
Yes, I'm going to, uh, I'll stop screen sharing so I can go in and find it, and then I'll come back.
Okay.
Sheet, sheet 5, Rich.
Okay.
Shows the overall site. Stop.
Betsy, is that in the, in the subfolder for the file, not on the shared drive?
I don't believe I put the site plans on the shared drive.
All right, all right.
I can share them if you want. I have it up on my other monitor.
Rich, you want him to share it, or you want to keep?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, maybe that'll be, I'll make him co-host, be more efficient, so.
Sure, okay.
All right, good, Brian.
Everyone should be seeing that now.
Yes.
Okay, I think we can all see that. I think the concern, one of the concerns anyway, had to do with the the amount of trees between Pond Street and the, and the array. And so I, I'm not quite sure the scale we're looking at here. Where's, 1 inch equals?
I can try a different sheet, come back to this one.
Do you want to show that profile that you sent over, Brian, too, just to?
Okay, I wondered if that'd be a good place to do that.
Yeah, and we, I think it might, might be, and then maybe jump back to this, just if need be.
Okay. You could also show sheet 9.
So, I'll just jump to this then really quickly. This was one of the other items that was requested that BSC prepare. And it was a, a line of sight drawing. Basically, what we're looking at here, and the, the view is rotated from the angular alignment that, or from the orientation of the rest of the plans. But you're looking at Pond Street, and we have 1, 2, 3 different lines of sight. This was the, this was the plan that we had, that we had sent. And this evening, I had made, today, I had made some modifications to it, and I'm just going to jump right to it now. The section that you're, I think you're concerned about is alignment number 2. And that is, right now, there's an existing curb cut there. It's a cleared area, and it's all, it's kind of, it's an open area right now. There used to be a building there. And that is probably the place where the greatest opportunity to, you know, to see these panels from Pond Street. So, what this graphic here demonstrates is it, and I'll, I'll flip back to the other sheet, but along the alignment that I, that I chose, the view of a car, a passenger in a car looking, trying to look at the array. If we plant some arborvitae right here, instead of the trees that were proposed at like a mature height shown, if you look at the green tree, that would be about 7 to 8 foot approximately, the height of an arborvitae. The line of sight, if you couldn't see through that, would be over the top, would take you up over the canopies. So, by this instance, you wouldn't even see these in a car in this position on Pond Street. And to go back to that prior graphic, that's at this location right here, where there's an existing curb cut and a big gravel clearing. Now, granted, if you were here, you would see them at a different angle. If you were past it, you might see it at a different angle. But this is the, the only means that we have to really represent that to you, other than showing you still photographs or.
Sure, would you, would you, all right, go, there you go. Now, the, the, the representation of trees that are here represents trees that already exist, true?
That's correct. On this graphic, so if you're looking at the bottom one here.
No, the middle one, the middle one.
Oh, so the trees over towards the right that I'm kind of encircling right now, these are existing trees.
Well, there must be trees between the edge going to the left side where this shows three trees.
There really isn't. That, that's what, and I have another photo I can show you right here.
You know, Walter?
Go ahead, John.
This, first of all, this is very consequential, the size of this site and the location. To me, replacing full-grown trees with arborvitae, which is the deer's favorite food source, really doesn't cut it. I, I think this is so comprehensive, and I was the one who asked that information. This really doesn't tell me much. I don't know the site back of the solar panels from the street, or I don't know any site distances as you're riding down the street. I would like to bring in a landscape architect and to look over this plan and to find out really what could be done to make this site visually as good as it can be to the people of Norfolk. And this is the type of project, I think, and it behooves a developer to limit his clear-cutting, because I don't think that we should come up with a, a mitigation landscape plan until the site has been cleared. Once the site has been cleared, we are able now to, to better decide where planting should go and what type, based on the traffic and, and the, the location of what's been taken down. But I think taking down a bunch of 80, 90-foot trees and putting in arborvitae isn't going to cut it for me on the main intersection. But I would like to have this review just to see, before they take everything down, to give us a better idea of what it's going to look like. And number 2, once it is cleared, as long as there, the panel numbers are all allowed, I'd like to come up with a mitigation plan to, to reestablish some type of privacy in this area. Other than that, I think we're just looking at this and guessing. We have no idea what this is going to look like when it's clear.
Yeah, well, to, to, to that point, John, the previous drawing we were looking at showed the, the anticipated clear-cut area, if I'm not mistaken. Could you scroll back to that one, Brian?
Yeah, and, and just to clear up, this area that I'm pointing to, there are no trees that are being cleared. It's already cleared. We're going to plant trees, just for a point of clarification.
Yeah, I picked that up.
Was this what you were looking at?
No, the, the one that shows, I guess it's an earlier one that shows the intended clear-cut area. Yeah, that one, if you can.
Almost there, hold on.
Yep, there we go. All right, now.
The area I was talking about was right here that's already cleared.
Yeah, what about the, this area here, the Pond Street area? How far back are those panels from the street?
These panels here?
Correct.
Those are over 100 feet back.
All right, and all of the high-growth trees along Pond Street are all going to be cleared?
No.
They're not.
Absolutely not.
How much of a, and this is what I asked you last time. How much of a buffer are you going to leave in there with the existing vegetation that we can use as a protective shield from all of the solar panels?
Right, so. Right, so this is a width right in here of about forty feet. But what's not shown by this plan is the slope that you would be looking at. You wouldn't be looking at panels back here. This is all gonna be, this is only reason we're removing trees here is to grade the site. So there would still be in this swath right here, about forty feet of existing mature trees that would be left unaltered. And that would exist from all the way from this corner of the site all the way to here, until you get to the proposed driveway, which would have to be cleared for obvious reasons. We need to put in a gate, an automatic gate there and, and so forth.
And that's what I'm saying, forty feet of, of, of pre-existing woods. So as you go back any section, you may have one or two trees in the whole forty foot area for, for a ten, fifteen foot width. And that's not gonna give adequate coverage for this. What is the elevation change in your panels? Is that going uphill?
It's absolutely going uphill and as this graphic demonstrates, you won't see those. You won't see those.
This, this is why I mentioned.
Where we're looking at, I mean, it's.
This is why I had mentioned before, Walter. We have had sites that have been cleared by subdivision folks. And we've had mayhem with the neighbors after that because nobody thought it was gonna look like that. And I've cleared some sites myself. And I would suggest that this is, unless we do multiple field walks, this is just too involved to know what it's gonna look like when this thing is all clear. And what we're gonna actually see. That's all.
Yep. Okay, let, let's go back to that, uh, drawing. We're just looking at a moment where.
It was about a twenty, twenty-five foot high slope to answer your, vertical, to answer your question.
Okay, uh, please go back to that, no, the other one that shows the, uh, the layer, that, that one, thank you. Is there any reason that you couldn't, uh, make the forty foot, uh, width sixty feet?
There is, and that's because we need to grade that, so in order to grade it, you're gonna have to kill the trees, you. I, I wanna say also, you know, one of the things that Beta requested was that we make sure that we're in compliance with the landscaping requirements based on, uh, um, based on the town bylaws. We are, and based on the amount of vegetation that's gonna remit, remain, we're well in compliance. Over three times the amount of required vegetation will remain on the site following construction.
This is a little different site than a regular subdivision site. This has got, how many acres of panels?
Um.
A lot.
Yeah, I don't have that, I don't have that number.
I just don't wanna be, well, you know, there's, there's four other board members. I don't wanna be responsible for having this thing cleared and having people come back and saying, what did you let them do that for? Because I've been through this before over the past fifteen years and it's not uncommon. And you probably, Brian, know what I'm talking about. We should have an idea of what it's gonna look like for a project this large in right on the main street.
Yeah, I think our major, uh, concern is along the Pond Street boundary. And, uh, I think as John is right, we need, need some more, uh, work done on that to understand what it's really gonna look like.
We could do, we could have a photo rendering done. Uh, and I think that would give you a more realistic look because it's based on real photographs integrated with the CAD and with the elevations. So we could, we could do that. It's all it takes really is that we get out and get some pretty decent photographs.
Phil, any, any, uh, thoughts, uh, relative to this issue?
So, um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with, uh, Google Earth Pro, um, looking at the trees on that, on that. The, there's a, there's a couple of challenges. Obviously, he's gonna have to clear for the grading and then all, also clear for the, uh, infiltration basin. Um, and the infiltration basin obviously doesn't, doesn't want to have trees in close proximity to it. So I, I think it's, and also see that curb cut come, cutting in? No, no, go left, right there, right there, yeah. So, so there's a little bit of clearing there, so I think there's gonna be a gap there. You know, so I, 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 I don't see the harm in, in, in kinda thinking this through. But it is, it is a challenging issue.
You know, the, the only consequential part, Rich, the back part of this in the southern part, is that, uh, the industrial park there? Down at the bottom right-hand corner, what, what is that?
This is the police station parking lot right here.
All right, so all of that, the most, to me, the most consequential part of this is the Pond Street part.
Agreed.
It's too, it's too bad the access road has to come in there.
Yep.
May, may I, um, speak for a second? The reason the access road is there is because we're voluntarily providing the police department a paved road so they can have emergency access to Pond Street from the police station. So the reason it's there is, is for a town benefit and, and the town released an RFP and the RFP required us to put um, the access there. And we, we put it in a place where there's no building across the street. Um, there's no, you know, there's no stop sign on Pond Street near there, so cars are gonna be coming down forty miles an hour. Um, they're not gonna have a high visibility of this area. And on the other side of Pond Street is trees and then a little over is, is another industrial building, so there's no residential in this area and I don't think it's gonna be a particularly high impact. But just, just to clear that up, the reason is for town benefit, not because we thought this was just the easiest thing to do. You know, this is what we're required to do.
Yep, all right. All right, well, we've got a lot to cover, so, uh, I think the resolution at this point is that, uh, between, uh, Beta and, uh, yourselves and, uh, possibly, uh, some additional resources that John referred to, that we ought to take another look at how this is going to look down the road and what the, the, uh, the green barrier really ought to be in, in the Pond Street area. And with that said, if that's okay with everyone, uh, let's move on.
Agreed.
Okay, um.
Rich, can you put back up the, uh, the Beta's peer review?
The letter, please, yeah.
Sure.
Stop my share. Thank you.
Okay. There will be a second.
When we get it up there, please go to page five. F-ten, what, what, F-ten is, is the next stop, I think. Uh, the issue here was the, uh, the protection of this, of the radio tower support anchors during construction. Are you, are you fellows at BSC accepting Beta's recommendation?
Yes, that, as, as I stated at the outset, we're accepting all of their recommendations. And, um, temporary, my, my response letter dated today states that temporary fencing will be added to the plant set to protect the anchors during construction. So we will do that. We've maintained with our design a minimum thirty foot buffer around all the existing facilities there, but we will certainly add temporary fencing during construction. No issue with that.
Thank you. All right, next page, page six. Um, J-two, um. Waivers requested, they did defer to the town. Uh, underground maximum, uh, says. Okay, so from BSC's point of view, what's the issue here?
So we're actually, we, I don't think that, I mean, it's a, it's a subjective call, what is, really whether or not one is warranted because it's a very open-ended comment. You know, can you screen something from every possible location? So like I, like I stated when I was, had that other graphic up, our intent is to provide, um, to provide landscaping where the screening is felt that it's necessary. And, you know, we're, we're not trying to tell you what's necessary. We're saying, well, you know, we'll listen to what, what people are saying is necessary.
This is where.
We can, you know.
You're, you're, wait a minute, I think you're, you're referring to J-three. Go, go look at J-two, which is about, uh, locating utilities underground.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, so that's a, a matter of the interconnection itself and it has to be stepped, the, the voltage has to be stepped down accordingly, so there has to be a few poles of overhead before it can be put underground.
All right, and is the, uh, uh, the minimum number of poles described on your, uh, site plan drawings?
Correct.
Phil, any comments?
No, it's typical. It's typical of these kinda installations.
Okay, so presumably that, uh, the next time we see this item, it can say issue resolved, all right, uh, J-three, uh, the green belt, uh, let's see.
This may be in line with John's idea of what happens when the trees are cleared.
Yeah, if you recall, we did do a similar, um, uh, condition for meeting house as well. I know there's quite a bit of discussion there. Yeah. Reading that, yeah, there was a screening of landscape plan as part of it, but then it also has to be assessed as well.
Walter, this goes back to the, uh, the landscape architect and the number of uh, uses for a person like that, whether it be Pond Street or screen the utilities or this type of green belt, these, which is the main issue to me in this project. This covers right across the whole project and it should be looked at by somebody that knows what he's doing. Unfortunately, Brian comes in and wants to replace these eighty and ninety foot trees with arborvitae, which is everybody's answer to landscape, or blueberry bush, both of those. I, I'd like to have it done so that we make sure it is screened properly.
I understand, I understand. We, uh.
We're not, again, we're not looking to replace ninety foot trees with arborvitae. Again, the arborvitae are in an area that's already cleared, just as a point of clarification. Just.
Um, let's see, uh, uh, let's settle this issue right now, since, uh, it may come up again as we proceed down the rest of the, of the letter here. Is there any objection to, uh, ha- having uh, that service that John has recommended, uh, come in and take a look at this project? Hearing none, then I think we should do it. Ryan, you're raising your hand again, sir.
I, I am, uh, because it's very open-ended and I would just ask if, if the board could get a little more specificity. I mean, we have landscape architects in-house as well. I mean, I, I don't understand spec, actually what you're looking at. I, I mean, I think you have to give them some direction or it's, where, where is this going, you know?
It, well, yes, of course, uh, we can, uh, we can write up a require, requirement, request for services and describe what we're asking, um. Between, uh, Rich and me and John and Chad, we can, uh, draft up something and make sure that it's, uh, specified. If you have those services, we would entertain, uh, having your people take a look at that, uh, or we could go outside and find someone else. Uh, John, any comments?
Yeah, we've used these on all the forty Bs. They have landscape architects and a lot of the forty Bs are not nearly the size of this site. The, the theory is to make sure it's screened properly, that the plants that they chose are lasting and, uh, hopefully indigenous, and, and make a difference. And I, I don't think that their team is the best to do it, but if they decide to use their own, what's normally been done is we have our own landscape architect who oversees that and makes sure it's done so the town will be satisfied at the end.
Yeah, similar to having a peer review by Phil, yes, I understand.
Exactly.
Okay, um.
Yeah, Brian, I think it's really just to make sure that you've done the, your level best to provide that screening from Pond Street and the, and the, and everything is from selections that they said, uh, in terms of plant, you know, screening, vegetation, and so forth, does the job.
I, I guess I'm just curious, Rich, you know, you asked us to prepare that line of sight graphic, but nobody wants to put any confidence in it either. I don't understand the purpose of that. I mean, I, I, are we looking for one hundred percent? Like this is an invisible development? Is that the standard? Cause that's awful difficult to me and I challenge it anywhere else in town or even on Pond Street for that matter.
Nobody said that. I think you're over-exaggerating, Brian. We want it to look like the site was a new, that's all.
I just wanna understand, that's all. I'm not trying to be difficult.
Yeah, I think, I think it's it's best effort to have a solar project alongside Pond Street and then visually, as you drive back and forth, the end of the day, when everything is done, it doesn't draw your eye to it, say what, you know, that it's there. I mean, that's not the grace of scripture, but I think that's generally the, the, the idea, the intent. You just make sure that I don't, you know, you're driving back and forth that it serves its purpose, the solar arrays there and you're not seeing it from the street. You know? I think it's, I don't think it's more complicated than that, but.
I don't think it's more complicated than that either.
It's not.
All right, um.
I mean, we see the towers that are there. Those you can see from a long ways away. You know, but I just know, that's why I just wanna understand the standard, but it's hard to design to something that we, if we don't understand the, the requirement. And this seems to be very subjective, which is difficult.
Well, but I think the, 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 uh, subjective issue is, uh, minimize the view of, of solar panels. Uh, it can be some, you know.
Do you have, do you have a plan sheet that shows the proposed plantings? Besides these, um, elevation cutaway views? No, we don't. One of the things we talked about with Richard McCarthy was that, um, that we would satisfy this, which we've done successfully in other projects, even here in Norfolk, um, satisfy the, the visual with a, um, you know, with the note saying that it will be determined, uh, in the field, you know, once it's constructed. And I think that was alluded to or mentioned earlier tonight, that that's probably the best way to really ensure, because we can come up, we can do all kinds of different renderings and graphics and photo renderings, but at the end of the day, until it's built, you, nobody's gonna really know what it's gonna look like.
Well, that's why we're gonna have a person committed to designing. Then you can look at the design, since you don't know how to do it, and you can make comments on someone that screens it, how the town would find acceptable. And then you can add your comments to that and then we can review them.
All right, so moving on, please, uh, let us go to, uh, the next item here, which is J-four. Beta requires a screen for it to be a solid fence structure. Um, okay, so that's an, an open issue there and a, and a, not a disagreement, but a, uh, a, uh, difference between, uh, what BSC is proposing and what Beta, uh, recommends here.
But relatively the same issue.
Yep.
It sounds like correcting my wrong, Brian understands that and will address that, that comment.
Sure, again, so we, the whole site is proposed to be closed by a seven foot high chain link fence. But the chain link fence, even though it's a, a structure, it's not providing screening.
Well, it can with, uh, with those, uh, panels that run in the, in the link. All right, moving on, J-six, um. I think that's all part of the same issue.
Yeah, we don't think that the waivers are, is required. We just, we just wanted to show it, show the.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, we go to page seven. All right, J seven um. All right, so uh again, if you could go back uh Brian to that drawing. And we could look at where these boundaries are on that drawing. That would be helpful.
I'll switch the sharing to Brian.
Okay.
So this, so this is a, so we we probably should have written this similar to the response with J eight. Now that I'm reading this, this was the boundary line between the two properties? Is that what the, that what they're referring to?
Yeah, that's.
Side of that back, so.
This is.
Yeah, yeah, so this, so this, use the same response for J eight is is that that should have been used for this, so.
The water office is going to have separate ownership?
So they're they're uh.
Can we see the drawing, please?
I'm waiting for it to refresh. You have to give it time. It's a big.
Okay, all right, okay, yep.
So while uh Brian's waiting for it to refresh, so their property in terms of next grid. They'll, they're going to merge the parcels that they have right now into one. And then the town will remain as separate. But under one site as one overall site, no ba- no merging of property lines because one is the. The town piece as the co applicant versus uh next grid. And under the. Your opinion from town council that you have. Because these are treated as is being treated as one project that interior lot line is not really an issue in terms of this situation.
Yeah, so we're deferring actually to the to the um.
The building commissioner.
Yeah, right, uh. But nevertheless, could Brian, can you find that drawing?
I I can. It should be popping up any minute.
Okay, now the the boundaries we're referring to here are which?
This line that I'm tracing right here.
Yep, yep.
This lower portion here, this is twelve share and that will remain um property of the town. This line, this side of it um to the east of it is all going to be privately owned. It will be owned by an ex grid.
Yeah, okay. Understood, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, let's move down uh back to the letter if we can uh beta letter on page seven.
M two. On page seven.
Yeah, M two, not a big issue, but uh. BSC says is a a location of of. The sign added to the layout, but uh Beta couldn't find it, so.
It will be, it will be added. It will be added.
Fair enough, okay. Next page uh is clear. Go to page nine. Okay, um, this top item here, whoops, don't don't go too far. Yeah, we will, we will add that, we will add that condition to to the decision. Okay, S one down down a little bit um. So you're going to have slopes. Greater than three to one uh if you and we utilize controlled matting. Um, uh Phil, with the uh with the. Proposed grade and the use of matting, are you comfortable?
So, yeah, I mean, the, I mean, it's not a structural, you know, slope. Uh, there is quite a bit of diff- uh, quite a bit of difference distance. From the bottom of the slope to the street.
Yeah.
Uh, so we don't see any risk um. You know, uh, to to the public on.
This is, what's the slopes, uh, Phil?
Uh, I want to say the two to one, but.
The maximum slopes are two to one.
Right.
Okay, all right. Uh, just underneath that S two. Has to do with the uh. The internal driveway, right?
So we were, I can help you out with this one. Uh, we were meeting the letter of the RFP and um. That that was just the short of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the you kind of back to the same topic in terms of the RFP, the intent was to have a. You know, emergency access for the police department and to best fit. As best as possible of an access road, but not something that complied with the rules and rights. Of the planning board.
Yeah. And that requires a waiver, right?
Correct.
And that'll be listed on the front of the sheet, okay. Um, moving down the bottom of page S four.
Same thing.
Okay, um. So the question would be, what is the slope as designed? So it's obviously not two percent. Uh, what is it?
No, so and I I can elaborate a little bit further on this. Um, subsequent to that, I had conversations with Blair Crane of Public Works. And to see if he would accept the the road geometry as designed. He understood the purpose of the road and its use, and he didn't have any issues with it. That said, we did look at it, take another look, and we were able to increase that two percent coming off the roadway for a distance of a hundred feet. As requested by Beta. Now, as a consequence to that, we did have to slightly increase the maximum grade so that we'll have a maximum grade of twelve percent, but that's. That's not all that steep. And.
Well, I'm not.
You know, we're trying to balance the cuts as well, so.
Yeah, I understand, okay. Well, twelve percent is not so steep in the summer, but in the winter it can be a tough grade.
Absolutely, and that's why we have the proper hundred foot distance of the two percent, um, you know.
Yep. Um, do you have?
Again, not to. Bang on the same topic, but it's going to be and the onus is going to be on DPW to make sure that's. That's um safe. In terms of, you know, that works for the police department, so it's on, it's on the town.
Is that, uh, i- is there a profile of that road in in your drawing set?
There is.
Okay, fair enough.
Rich, who's going to own this road?
What's that?
Who's going to own the road, the access road?
So it's, we have, it's a, it's on their property and we have an easement over it too, but it's theirs and we're going to be maintaining it.
Okay, um. Let's see, one page, page.
Come back up.
Page ten, okay, uh, top of page ten, S five uh. I think waivers should be granted on this one. What do you think, Rich?
Yeah, there is a sidewalk on the, yes.
Okay. Number S eight, I think uh we could agree with that as well because we use Cape Cod berm in a number of places. And. Which reminds me, Rich, is sort of a side issue. Uh, we're still calling for a slanted granite curbing, right, in in our regs?
Yeah, yes.
We need to change that, don't we?
Yes.
Just a few things.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Let's see, down S twelve, uh, scroll up if you would, please.
This is one we definitely should change.
Yes.
Agreed, yep. Okay, thirteen um. We we have a. Yeah, there there's a sidewalk across the street, is there not?
Correct, the entire length, yep.
Yeah. Um, I think we ought to probably grant that one. S fourteen uh. Yes, that's true. We should uh agree to that. S fifteen. So presumably what this is saying is that the emergency access road that comes out onto uh. Pond Street doesn't require a stop sign there, right? That's that's essentially what what this is saying.
Right, correct. And it's a private road that's gated.
Yeah, yeah.
I. I don't know if you'd really need a sign.
I I, well, it's it's the people who are going to use it apparently are primarily the police, right? You've you folks won't be using it. You'll be accessing the site from the other end, right? Once the site is built, that is.
Once the site's built, it, the only people that are going to be using it are the police department and whenever next grid, if they need to do any kind of maintenance, like. They'll probably have to cut the grass a couple times a season or a couple times a summer. If they need to do any, if their monitoring of the system tells them that they need to go out and take a look at something. But I mean, I think we're talking, you know, under ten times a year, maybe once a month at the most.
And when 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 uh. Next grid needs to cut the grass, which entrance are they coming in?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know. I I would think the pond street is the more accessible entrance.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, I I I think we ought to uh bow to the police department, give them the call on that one.
Yeah, they're not going to stop. They're uh.
Yeah, give themselves a ticket.
Okay, moving down S one, SW one, excuse me, SW one um.
This is just the curb stones for the catch basin, so.
Yeah.
This can be waived.
This can be waived, all right. That's it on that page. Let's go to page twelve. SW eight.
I think that needs just just clarification, Kate.
Yeah, okay. Needs clarification, all right.
Can I speak to that quickly, sir?
Certainly.
Uh, we did that analysis, Phil, and there is, along with some of the other recommendations to change the site to. The hydraulic soil group A, it does come out that there is a slight increase in a hundred year storm of approximately a half a CFS. Zero point five CFS. I've always taken that um. To be a de minimis change, but certainly one, in my opinion, that would not have an adverse impact. On the on the property. Just wondering your thoughts if you would agree with that.
Um, well, yeah, I I I think we should work this off offline. I don't, I it's probably not an issue, but I don't want to say yes without. Understanding.
Fair enough.
And that's that's really S eight and S nine together, is it not?
Right.
Okay, uh, ten, however, is a little bit different, right? It has to do with a number of test pits required.
Yeah, but if he if he's conforming to this, it's not an issue.
Fair enough, okay. All right, let me move on to the next page thirteen and SW thirteen.
It's a typical condition that we have, so.
Yeah, okay, um, any of, any objection on BSC's brought to that?
Nope.
Okay, fourteen uh.
So this should be, this this should be waived as well, so this, we we don't see an issue with this.
Fair enough, okay, yep. That covers that um, page fourteen. SW twenty.
So, um, yeah, so I think the concern here is that uh clear cutting the entire parcel. Maybe an issue relative to erosion controls and. Storm events. Um, however, the majority of the site is A soils. Um, we were just. We just want the applicant to consider possibly staging. Different clearing and 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 open, open sections of the the site, twenty twenty five acres of open land is is a significant amount, so.
You know, with the elevation, with the elevations on this site and minimal test pits done. Can you, can you ensure that there's no mounding in some parts of this property? Would you change everything?
Uh, we are greater than four feet above of the seasonal high groundwater table, so groundwater mounding analysis is not necessary.
I was, I was.
That's what you were talking about.
Yes, yes, no, it's a highly draining uh uh soil, so. Those typically don't have a groundwater issue, so.
So that's really first of both the twenty and twenty one, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Um, page fifteen is resolved. Page sixteen, the last page, Rich. Uh, we agree with Beta's recommendation on twenty nine.
Yeah, it's a standard condition.
And what about A one there?
Yeah, it's it's, we can take that offline, but basically they're not, they're not squalls, it's just grading.
All right, now we've covered Beta's letter. Considering your letter that we received uh just before the meeting, is there anything in your letter that you that we have not already touched on that you want to bring to our attention?
No, we covered everything.
Okay.
The same dozen outstanding items.
Got you, okay. Uh, any further questions from board members this evening?
No questions, but I I think the biggest concern is just providing that uh screening along Pond Street. That's that's, to me, comes across as the as the biggest concern.
Yeah. Um, I I think there may be some uh some issues that we didn't touch on relative to screening uh between. The area uh and and also the the residences there behind the businesses along Pond Street. Got to make sure that that's covered as well.
Keep in mind too, Walter, that the on the graphs that we were showing, it shows the site distance with the arborvitae. With the site decision, somebody sitting in a car. I mean, there's also a sidewalk there. People are going to be walking by there too.
Yeah, they're going to be walking on the other side of the street, that's right, yeah.
Exactly.
Yep, yep. Okay, um, any questions for anyone in the audience that uh has been listening to all this? Okay, hearing none, then uh. We will look forward to to uh having another round with you fellas uh next month. Unfortunately. Your desire to close it out tonight uh isn't going to work, I don't think. I I must say that uh we we recognize that this project is going to be very beneficial to the town. And we're looking forward to it being completed. Um, I think the issues we touched on tonight are all resolvable. There's there's no. Major stumbling blocks, just a matter of getting it done. Uh, any, anything, anything else before we move on?
Just a motion to continue it and. To march eight.
I've lost my agenda here, what I do with the agenda? God. Um, we need a motion to continue, yes. Chair will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for ninety to one hundred. public hearing for ninety to one hundred Pond Street and twelve Sharon Avenue's site plan approval and stormwater management permit for proposed large-scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic system until uh March eighth at uh seven P M.
Seven, seven.
Seven o'clock works.
Okay.
So do I have, hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, all those in favor, Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Monford.
Hi.
And your opinion, Gary, if you're with us?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, uh, good luck.
Did you vote, Walter?
Say again?
Would you vote?
Oh, sorry, yes, Chair votes aye, my apologies. Uh, all right, uh, thank you, gentlemen, and we look forward to seeing you next month.
Good night.
Next item on our agenda is a request to continue for the McArthur Ave definitive subdivision roadway improvement plan. Um, we need a motion to that effect.
Motion to continue the McArthur Avenue's definitive subdivision roadway improvement plan for one existing lot in McArthur Avenue off the end of Hunter Avenue.
Until our March eighth at seven fifteen.
Sounds good.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Mr. Weddleton, if you're still with us. Uh, he's temporarily stepped away, uh, Chair votes aye.
Okay.
All right, next item um is discuss proposed town meeting zoning bylaw amendments and schedule public hearing on April twelfth. Rich, you please take us through that.
Sure, so I will uh I'll do is I'll screen share by V E S, uh, so let me just uh go and get that.
Give me thirty seconds, I'm gonna throw another log on the fire, I'll be right with you.
All right.
Walter, you need to stoke it up a little bit so we can see it.
Yeah, I didn't see. Didn't think it was on. I guess that's not.
Thank you for the ambiance, Walter.
Okay. So as a continuation discussion from the last meeting of the planning board, if you recall, we had Kyle Purvis uh from Leland Wild come before you um to ask, well, I asked actually, um, to work together with them on a, on a zoning bylaw change that um would allow for them, they quickly, sorry, I should have, they've, Leland Wild LLC purchased the former Norfolk Airport property and their intention is to keep it in a natural state and have trails there and utilize it for the beauty of which it is in its natural state in conservation-related, educational wellness-related uses. So we went um between the last meeting, you gave me the blessing to work with them and with Bob and Jonathan and Town Council, so what I presented to you tonight is a definition for a nature center um which uh would not only be, it's applicable, it would be, if changed, the recommendation would add it to our table of allowable uses in any residential district uh by special permit through the planning board. Um, any site development in terms of long-term buildings and so forth would be through a site plan approval process, the minimum size parcel or parcels is twenty-five acres as you see, so what we did was within the definition created some standards, if you will, and some provisions for which they could um utilize the property as well as others if they wanted to do this down the road. Um, it is, it is for a nonprofit entity. Uh, when I was before you last month, there was there was the possibility that it could be for profit. But as Kyle updated the board, they are, they have applied for nonprofit status and are seeking, are waiting to hear back um on that status being designated for them. Uh, and this, as you know, Mass Audubon is already uh, is a nonprofit, so this would a lot of the things that you see in here are really what you see going on at Mass Audubon today. Uh. And then uh, as I mentioned, the sec companion piece to this is adding it to the scroll down here, as in the table of allowable uses by special permit. Uh, to keep it simple and clear with the zoning bylaws, we did specify in the definition section that is the planning board, because presently in our table of allowable uses there isn't really any place to park the planning board in this use, so we, we took care of it under the definition section. And then the companion piece, which is um applicable to them in the long and short range is creating flexibility for parking areas when it comes to outdoor recreation, conservation, and parkland uses. Um, presently, it has to be a municipal use to be able to to give the planning board discretion through a special permit process to waive uh design standards for parking lots. With this um proposed amendment, obviously it still will be applicable to the town, but it also would be available to what the heck, that is, uh, sorry about that. Still back to my sorry about that, got all the screen here, um. Would be available to them as well, uh, what we did is a couple of things, we've gone back through section F seven of the parking requirements. We're giving the planning board even a little more latitude to customize these things on a site-by-site basis, so for example driveway, a drive aisle width and so forth. The planning board would be presented with a site plan parking, showing the parking, and you could design it accordingly for each application. Um, and I know Chris had made the, the comment about the permanent marking, so we, we are deleting that. However, through the perm, through the permitting process, you can figure out how you want to have parking spaces delineated, because it could be as, as little as one, two spaces, all the way up to maybe ten or twelve, so it, it, I suspect it'll probably vary uh over time. And so this, this section, this change would benefit them long and short term, but it would benefit the town Norfolk as well. Um, because this gives the town a little bit more flexibility trying to provide parking in some of the open space parcels around town to have them fit a little bit better with the natural landscape in the surrounding area as well as, as I mentioned last time, Mass Audubon, who would like to, to provide some new parking uh for their property as well, so those are the they're separate articles, but they're really companions, so.
Yeah.
My request is to hopefully uh vote to sponsor these changes, and I'll pause for questions at the moment.
I do have a question, um, around ADA, uh, we talked about handicap parking at one point, um, pointing out that Pond Street has a paved area for handicap um vehicles to be able to exit appropriately, um, but I don't see any provision for that in here, is that provided somewhere else?
So in section F seven of the bylaw, it, it does touch on uh handicap accessibility for parking, so it depends on if it need, if accessible parking is required, then it will need to be accessible, but also require an accessible route to as well, so it wouldn't be just the uh, the parking. Um, so we would have to address that um on a case-by-case basis. So it's still, it's still there. Um, it's just in section F seven, so as, when something comes in, that's going to be part of the process to figure out um whether it's, there is an accessible route, you can you can apply for a waiver, um, if it, if it if it doesn't make sense because the trail, so it's covered, let's put it that way, so there, but.
That's all I needed to hear, thank you, Rich.
That's all we're uh do it.
Uh, Rich, you have another one down below, I believe, on accessory buildings, do you want us to uh?
Yeah, I'd like you to sponsor that as well.
Fair enough, but I mean, do you want us to, to make, take one vote to sponsor all of them, or do you want the votes to be individual?
So it's up to you, it's whatever your pleasure is, you can.
Well, my pleasure would be to, to vote once to cover them all, but let's keep going.
Okay, all right, so uh very minor change in terms of S accessory buildings, um, just to insert the word setback. Um.
Yeah.
You know, we spent quite a bit of time on it last time, um, just to make it clear that it's the front yard setback for those accessory structures.
Now, Bob Bullock raised this initially, uh, presume you've run that, that change through him.
I have, as a matter of fact, was really in conversations with uh with him and Jonathan, that, that's, this is what we landed on.
Okay.
Simple, um, yeah.
Fair enough.
And then, the la, the la, the last, I'm sorry, my, sorry, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, the last item is in terms of sponsorship, I don't have it before you, but it's, it will be for the recodification of the zoning bylaws, I don't have it yet. Um.
Okay.
So that's forthcoming, but.
That will be next meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah, all right. Uh, questions from board members on any of these, these three?
Um, Rich, have it sounds like you talked to the building department on the, on the F five, the accessory buildings, um, have you talked to any of the other boards regarding the nature center, I mean you know, I I guess this, this, have you given a heads up to the select board, or are you just waiting for our approval first to proceed with running that by the select board?
Um, no, waiting for your approval, I guess would be the short answer in terms of.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm trying to think if I.
No, that's fine, I mean, that's fine, I'm just curious if you'd run this by any of the other boards yet?
I did actually.
Like conservation?
Yeah, you know, I'm trying to, trying to my memory, I did actually talk to the Conservation Commission last month about it.
Okay. Do you also want to, in, in addition to, different than the nature center, but in addition to adding sponsored changes, do we want to put in there about the, you know, the two things that came up on that previous beta review regarding the slope granite curb and the, and our, our survey datum?
Well, that's in the reg, so that, that would be separate.
Okay.
Yeah. This is just the zoning.
True, very true.
Anyone else have any?
Yeah. Very quickly, um, just on the front yard setback piece, I know we had discussed this a, a, quite a, a lot and um part of the reason was because of accessory buildings for pools and things like that, which were really in the side setback, um, so this alleviates the situation as written, is that so, Rich?
Well, it clarifies you can't be in the, you have to respect that setback, the five, the fifty feet for, so the, the fifty-foot setback will run the, the entire frontage of the lot from sideline to sideline. So that, that should hopefully clarify, I think, because I think, you know, what's happened in some instances is people see uh, you know, off to the side of their house, which is not technically in the front, so to speak, but from the zoning bylaw standpoint, is, that front yard is literally is, you know, sideline and sideline fifty feet back, you know, that rectangular piece, so that's what this will clarify. There is, there is a so yes, and just to emphasize that further, there is actually a figure diagram within the zoning bylaws that shows required yard to, to help people as well. Um, just to, again, just to, so visually make people aware what that is too, it's in the zone, it's in the back.
And so if you have a corner lot, it's fifty feet on the two sides of butting the street?
Yeah, so the corner lot, you end up having two, two, uh, required front yard setbacks, so yes, you have two fifty in the, uh, so in the back of the book. So you see my, I don't know if you can see it, but there's this there's a appendix drawing A and which is incorporated in the zoning bylaws, which has a diagram which shows you it, it has corner lots on, interior lots, through lots, interior lot, uh, so it shows you that graphically what those all are, so talking with the building department, said, let's just put the setback in, and I think that should clear it up, so.
My only issue is the same one as uh before. And houses that are setback fifty to one hundred eight can't have a pool or a shed technically in the front, yeah.
Yeah. The front yard setback, you mean?
Yeah, well, if your house is set, if it's a fifty-foot setback and the house is setback seventy feet, they could have their shed in the front, yeah, our pool. And the only way around that was having the setback be the plane of the front of the house, then it has to be behind the house, no matter where it's set. But yeah, the building department deals with this, if they're com- comfortable with that, I'm not going to go make a big stink about it.
All right, that's, I love that.
I know you do, yeah, I know you do.
I don't want to go spiraling down there?
Yeah, I'll let it slip, maybe it could through town meeting, but I'll let it slip.
Now, don't bring it up. Don't bring it up at town meeting, yeah. We have a, we have a, somebody chime in there, who was?
That's me again, a, and interested keeping things interesting, if we could go back to the uh nature center, um, just curious on the twenty-five acres and the catalyst for that.
I don't think, uh.
Were you saying it came from them, Rich?
I don't, I think actually, I know Kyle, I know Kyle's on, I think they actually have more than twenty-five acres anyway.
Yes, at least a hundred acres.
Yeah, so.
We're, we're about a hundred and ninety-four acres, I, I don't think that that came from us, I think in an original meeting um, we were sort of tasked with going back to our team and figuring out how we could write something up that was applicable for someone, another landowner that wanted to do something similar, and we sort of we might have said, uh, twenty-five acres, but it was nothing that was specific to us, we have well more than that.
Yeah, and I think if I recall correctly, looking at the acreage, I think Mass Audubon has uh more than that as well, of course, you know, what's a little bit, you know, deceiving is that their house is wrapped around by DCR property, that's not really, they're, they're holding, they're across the street, you know, but anyway. We didn't write fit it, if that's. We didn't write fit it, if that's what you were thinking, like, oh, there's twenty-five and that, you know.
Well, I'm just curious, like, you know, if something comes in and it's just under twenty, are, are we going to say no, it can't be a nature preserve? Like, you know, reading the definition here, it could just be a forest and trail, and that could be your, your nature center, essentially. It doesn't have to have a building.
You're right, but the so you could but you do need to be nonprofit too, though. So that's the other component of this.
Yeah, I, I'm going back to like a discussion that was happening on the, the Facebook group at one point. They were talking about the property that was up for sale at one point, and they had asked the conservation commission to essentially look at it. I know Kevin Calcar had commented as well. It's essentially a landlocked parcel from my understanding, but it's nowhere near twenty-five acres to my knowledge. But if something did happen on that property and the town or individuals handed together to try and do similar to what Ms. Pramish has done, I wouldn't want it to necessarily be subjected to the twenty-five acres.
Rich, why don't you put it out in there that, that twenty-five acre number could be adjusted by a special permit from the planning board?
Yeah, that makes sense, John.
Now you've got the
Do you want, yeah, I could, we could, yeah, we could, we could tweak it that way. I get the one, would you want to have at least some bottom floor minimum to it? Or, I mean, just a thought.
No, I think, I think the, the bottom would be discussed in a, every particular case.
As part of the special permit process?
Yeah, as part of the special permit process.
All right, all right. So I'll
Right, yeah.
I'll go back to the group to make, so subject to, to that, I'll make the revisions. So if you want to sponsor it conditionally, and you'll, of course, you're going to have to have a you know, hold a public hearing on this, but this is at least to get it into the queue for a town meeting.
Agreed. Okay. All right. So any further discussion before we take a vote to support these? Hearing none, then the chair will, will entertain a motion to provide planning board support for the three articles proposed for zoning changes.
So moved.
Second?
Hold on, isn't it, isn't it two articles?
No, actually, it's three.
Oh, no, it's three. It's three, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. So second?
Second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Monford. Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Sullivan, your opinion, sir? All right, he was muted, but we understood his lip, we read his lips.
Can we get a, would it be possible to get a conditional subject to getting the manuscript for the recodification sponsorship, something along that line?
No. Not until you put something in front of us next meeting. All right, moving along.
Point taken.
Two twenty-eight Denham Street, view and approve site plan, special permit decision and stormwater management permit. We've seen a draft of that this afternoon circulated. A few of us have made some comments, including Rick Godro, by the way, who sent you something towards the end of the evening, afternoon rather, Rich. So do you have, you have the latest version?
I do. I didn't see Rick get a chance to say what he said, though, so.
Oh, you had two small comments.
All right, I'll, I'll go get it right now. Hold on.
Walter, do you want to do the minutes while he looks that up?
Um, sure, why not? Let's see, we need a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. And roll call vote, Mr. Peck.
I will abstain since I was not at that meeting.
Very good. Okay. Mr. Monford.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Gary, your opinion? I can't read your lips because I can't see you at the moment. He's got it up here. Okay. All right, so we have approved those minutes. Now we're back to two twenty-eight Denham Street. Does anybody have any questions on this site plan permit decision? I think we've all had a chance to read it and comment. And, Richard, presume you've, you've absorbed the comments from the various members of the board? And, and Mr. Goodrow?
I have for the board. I haven't addressed Mr. Goodrow's comments, but I can and maybe make it if you're so inclined, subject to that, and then I'll, we'll just clean it up and then you can sign it once it's all cleaned up.
Well, fair enough, but I'd like you to at least look at what he, what he submitted and say to yourself, I'm okay with them.
Yeah, can you see it on the?
Yeah.
All right, well, that, that one's, I already, so that one, let's see, the bottom, I'll start from the bottom up. That one I caught and I got rid of it, so that one's done.
Okay.
Uh, C one B off highway should be, okay, that, I can change that easily. Yeah, that, that's, those are pretty easy to take.
Actually, it's a combination of on and off, isn't it?
Yeah, so I'll tweak that.
Yeah, all right, fair enough.
Yeah, they, they seem to both be pretty, pretty simple, kind of just housekeeping, just keeping it clean.
Yep, agreed. All right, so any further discussion on this before we take a vote to, to approve it? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the site plan. Scroll down so I can read the title with you, please.
Sorry.
Site plan and special permit application decision number twenty twenty-one dash zero three.
So moved.
Wait a second. All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
You're muted, Gary.
Hi.
And.
I, I wasn't, I, was I muted? Sorry.
You were, but you're okay now.
Okay.
Mr. Monford. All right.
Hi.
And chair votes aye. All right, so that one's in, in the books.
Now the stormwater?
Yeah, we need a stormwater too, right?
Yep. Let's see.
All right, so again, we've all had a chance to read this and comment on it.
And I made the edits from the board members.
Okay. The only question I had was in section G.
Yeah, I fixed that, actually.
Okay, fair enough.
So I'll scroll down to so it is a previously developed site, and they are doing stormwater improvements on the site, so they have it incorporated into the project.
Okay. Any questions from the board members on the stormwater management permit? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the conditions of approval for two twenty-eight Denham Street stormwater management permit.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Monford. Chair votes aye. And your opinion, Gary?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Nice.
All right, all right. Thank you, sir. All right, so that one's in the books as well. Um, badi, 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 all right. Meeting minutes, we covered sponsorship. We, we, we will see something at the next meeting for the for the master plan financial effort.
I should talk about that one quickly, though, right?
I thought I was going to get by.
Oh, wow.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, go ahead.
All right, just quickly. My, my ask is to just the plan board to sponsor an article to submit to town meeting to fund a partial funding in the master plan in, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. If you recall, we had forty thousand dollars that we received from a grant. So the, the, they ask us to start with fifty and then get the plan out for a request for proposal and get started in the fall. And then as we get to the fall, we could see where at for additional funding if needed when we get to that point, but that, that's really it.
All right, okay, I got it.
So if I recall, Rich, you were looking for roughly a total of a hundred thousand fifty, fifty, request of fifty, we got the grant for forty, and then I think the town had ten that they could contribute already. Is that right?
Yeah, different grant, but the town has, so we have forty in the grant, fifty from the town for spring, and then another fifty in the fall. But the the idea, essentially, we, because of the time, and then you line up with the budget cycle and the, you know, fiscal, we don't need a hundred right now. So it doesn't make sense to
Okay.
tie up a hundred thousand dollars because we're not, we're really not going to be getting out of the gate till the fall, but I want to have at least that money when we drop for proposals that we know we have, you know.
Okay, so the quest would be for fifty for now, and then another fifty at fall meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so what would you like the board to do tonight, Rich?
What I'll do is I'll draft you a, a little in concept that you're supporting this, I'll put something together, just review it, and you can bless it, how's that, to put on the warrant?
Fair enough. Okay, and we can do that offline from tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. All right, next item is the twenty twenty-one annual report, which has been drafted by Betsy and critiqued by all of us, I guess, and is available. It was issued to us this afternoon to review. Any further comments on the planning board twenty twenty-one annual report? Hearing none, then the chair will entertain a motion to support the twenty twenty-one planning board annual report as drafted. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
You can't second it if you made the motion.
I thought Chad made the motion. I thought he got to it first. All right, I'll take the motion.
Take the motion. All right, John will second it. Very good. Roll call vote to support the planning board twenty twenty-one annual report as drafted. Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
And Mr. Monford.
Hi.
And chair votes aye. And Gary, your opinion?
Hi, I love those minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Rich, what if you don't get the second fifty next year?
One problem at a time, John.
Yeah, problem at a time.
Okay, town planner updates. Take it, Rich.
All right, just quickly, I'm finalizing the scope of work with Woodward and Current to get some additional testing on the way. For which then we'd be able to sit down with the DEP, discuss the findings and potentially locating a sewer discharge field. And then in addition to that, we come back to the planning board to discuss the findings and then meet with the property owners to take a little bit of a baby step and then go and then proceed to the next level. So that's where we're at. If you recall, I mentioned that we did receive a hundred thousand dollar earmark in the state budget to fund that. So that's where the funding is coming from right now for this work.
So timing wise on that, Rich, I, if I recall, that this current infrastructure bill that got passed is going to have some funding to hopefully help us build this. Is that? Um, are, what are the deadlines on that? I guess what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, that I'm not, I, I'm under the same understanding. I don't know what the deadlines are actually on that.
I don't either, but I think it would be good to try and find out what those deadlines, because we sure don't want to miss it, right? I mean, because this would be a great opportunity for us to get, you know, a substantial part of this funded by this infrastructure bill.
Yeah, let me I'll reach out to Woodward and Current too as well to see what they can, see what they're aware of too. The other, the other, the only, the other funding available to the American Recovery Plan Act as well, has money available, which
That's great.
If, if, you know, if everything moves positively on this first step, then we would go to that next step to seek funding from those sources to, to work through the design aspect to get to the construction. So, but I'll get back to you on the other question, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to just find out what, you know, what are the deadlines for getting some, some grants on this? The other would be question I did have is what, what's the kind of the rough schedule? I mean, I know it's a little early, but but you know, what, if we were to move forward with this, when would we anticipate building this? And being able to hook up, you know, put it into service?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably.
And if you can't answer that tonight, that's fine. I just was kind of like, because it seems like you're getting you and, or we as the board, we're getting a lot of inquiries for, hey, what's going on? When's it going to be ready? I, I would love to redevelop my property, just waiting on, when can I hook up? And so some sort of a rough timeframe would be good.
Yeah, as we, as we go to this next level, I'll try to work with them again to kind of firm up the well, give it a better timeline.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm not looking for like, oh, it's going to be April third, two thousand twenty-three. I'm, I'm looking for just kind of some rough, hey, we anticipate it'll be ready, you know, end of twenty twenty-four. And, you know, where are we talking, two years out, five years out?
I think we're talking your grandchildren.
I hope not.
Well, I'm hoping not your grandchildren, but the, the, the thing is, it is shifting out, I'll, I'll say that, you know.
But we need to get the funds because we have a school coming, a fire department building coming. And that's probably going to be seventy million right there. So have you contacted Representative Dooley? He got us all the funding on that Lawrence Street Bridge, and he seems to have an end with some of these things available.
So we're not ready yet for that? That would be the construct? Yeah.
When Chad's first grandchild's born, we'll talk to Sean.
Hopefully sooner than that, but that pot of money that you referenced, John, is the pot that we'd be going after, so.
Right.
So.
Because those consultants did a great job.
Yeah, so we, we'd be definitely going back to that pot of money, so. Again, just for here, because you mentioned it, the, the, the plan for this from a finance standpoint is, is grants and betterments.
Right, right. Yep, I remember that.
And convincing the butters that are going to pay a betterment to pay the betterment.
Yep, yep.
That's probably the biggest thing.
Right.
Especially if they do not need the sewer connection.
Correct. No, I get that. But for the non, the taxpayer that is outside the area is not going to benefit, I just want to, you know, be clear.
And not going to pay for it either.
Correct. No, that's what I'm saying. This is, this is based on a betterment grant funding source.
Right, right.
Right.
Right. If nobody else sells, tells me otherwise, fine, but that's how I'm proceeding with the way this executes this project. Okay, that's enough on that one.
Yep, update Southwood.
Um, well, I think I see Jane, well, I'll defer the floor to Jane. I know she wanted to speak on this topic to the board.
Well, before Well, um, before we do that, um, You had sent out, um,
Oh, sure.
Two things that, uh, you probably ought to co- comment on.
Sure, yep, so, um, I did send out to the board the modified scope of work for the planning grant. Which included, uh, an email from Executive Office Environmental Affairs To Back to my office. In terms of the modification, the scope of work Was acceptable, is within the parameters Of the grant request and didn't need any contract Amendments at all to, uh, To execute that Scope of work, so we're Gonna proceed With that project. With that scope of work.
Yep. And then there was the, uh, The draft of the Contract for Professional Services for M A P C, right?
Yeah, which is essentially, so that, that contract is between the Town Norfolk and M A P C, who's gonna be doing the planning work. So we have a, a separate contract with the Executive Office Environmental Affairs To receive the money. And then in turn, we would be paying And that second contract with M A P C would be for the work, we'd be paying them for their services, so That scope Of work That modified scope is in, is for both, you know, it's, it's a one side, it's in the Reference from E O A coming to the, the money coming to the town, and then that scope is the work that E, uh, M A P C is going to Move forward to work on.
Yeah, yeah, um, well, the, the, uh, comment I made to you Uh, earlier in the day was that, uh, when I read that M A P C draft contract, It made no reference to the fact that, uh, G F I Was involved in this, uh, and, and there needs to be some mention of that, so.
More than that, Walter, we got this grant before there was a buyer. Now there's an owner. You think that the owner's gonna let us tell them what they're gonna do?
Absolutely not.
Like, that's all rich, the only one that can really decide on the, uh, the, uh, components of the project is really the owner. Because the components are gonna be based on the cleanup. So if they're gonna have a land cost of fifteen million dollars to Get that place cleaned up and dig down the building, they're gonna have to come up with a project that can generate that much profit To pay the land cost and make a profit, so basically, for the, the ball is in their court, so I don't know how much help M A P C is gonna be, or what they're gonna listen to, they probably have A pretty good idea of what they have to do to recoup what they're gonna spend. Other than that, having an outsider to tell them what to do, not knowing any of the internals is kind of, um, silly.
Yeah, well, and they don't, they probably don't even have a good handle on what it's gonna cost them to clean up the place yet either.
Exactly.
No, they are, so the point, they are working, you know, they have to do the assessment, then figure out the cleanup costs, they The grant at, the grant and actually the zoning work in terms of Looking at the forty R would be It would need to be done in partnership with them, because the whole Idea of the forty R district is to do it in partnership with, with an entity like G F I, whoever else. Um, you know, and that, uh, So we did, just to quickly on this point, so we did look at Creating a forty R district for downtown when we were working on the zoning bylaws at that point. And the, the takeaway when we looked at it For town center was that of the forty R districts that have been developed in the state The one, the predominantly amount of them have been with a developer who was working with the town on What that district looks like, the design, uses, et cetera, so, so they Yes, they're not specifically mentioned in there, but they, they have to be a partner in this, otherwise it doesn't work, so.
All right, um, is there someone here, uh, from the PIP group who would like to speak?
Uh, well, this is Jane Dewey, uh, I just, following up on the email we sent to, um, Planning Board and other people Uh, county officials with, uh, various questions, and we got some answers, but one of the questions we asked was Um, was a decision made by someone in authority in town that the Southwood site should be developed as a forty R? And if so, who made it and when was that decision made and at what public meeting? And the impression I get is it's, it was G F I's decision to do forty R and that We're fine with that, but I just I just never saw it at a public meeting, I never heard anything about it until I heard that the scope of work was gonna be changed to Focus on forty R, and, and I guess my concern is, um, Is that I think forty R is much more controversial than forty B, as I see it. So I just worry that You know, if it comes to forty R, we, and we don't also include forty B as an alternative, something to look at That maybe the town won't be happy with forty R and, and then it'll be too late for forty B.
Uh, from your, from your perspective, why is a forty R more, uh, controversial?
Well, um, and I don't, I'm not an expert on it, um, but just from what I've read on forty R, It seems like it's, it's intended for places where there's, uh, easy access to transportation. It's highly, um, dense, um, property, so it's multi-story buildings. Um, and never mind the issues with the Um, Chemicals and things like that on the site, I mean, be, even besides from that, I just wonder if that's a proper place for Um, extreme density living with, with apartments too, which is new for Norfolk.
Hi Jane, John Weddleton.
Hi, John.
That was only a brief comment made, only because the thought of them doing multi-unit housing up there, that concept was simply Mentioned by the Planning Board and nobody else, certainly not the, uh, the owner. And that's something you just look at normally, because there's money for the town, but as you said, you're right. It involves a lot more density as a minimum requirement. And not to say these developers would even want to get into that, but that's Not even on a ball field right now, that's just An open concept that we mentioned briefly at a meeting, that's it.
Okay.
Nothing at all about that, and, and that would be the, that would be like a local, uh, initiative with the developer in unison with the town. And the town would have to vote to make that a district, so it's in the, it's in the voters' hands, not the planning boards.
Okay, so it's not the, the impression I just got, and I'm Not saying it's right, but that the Planning Board was all on board with the forty R and that's the way this was going.
No, that's totally wrong.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure how that impression came to be, because, you know, the, this is
That's why there's a community page.
I don't even have access to that, so.
So, um, and just quickly, in terms of the scope of work That was submitted back in May, it had forty R and it had forty B to look at, forty B is still something that will be looked at, there would be a planning process. And the modification to the scope Is that if there's a decision that forty R makes sense for the town, um, that A, a zoning package and design guidelines could be an end product As part of that planning process, the first The way the scope was Originally, um, that wouldn't have been an end product, it would have It could have come to the end and say, hey, forty R might be advantageous to the town, but that was it. So, there'll still be the planning process as we go forward. Still weighing out, um, whether or not it makes sense or not, as John mentioned, it's up to the town, uh, whether the forty R Um, you know, makes sense or not. And forty B is always on the table, because it overrides zoning, so there isn't You know?
You know, Jane, we had, we had, uh, Talked about that, because, uh, if they did a forty B plan, it would help, uh, get rid of our, our, uh, Ten percent quarter as far as our requirement. But the fact of the matter is, her, these folks may not wanna get into that, because that property Is zoned for fifty-five and older housing. And the density allowances are quite significant, so I think our first applicant, and you were with us on the first go around in Southwood four years ago For a while, or I think they were having like two hundred fifty units Of fifty-five and older that were allowed by Reich. So this developer may want to take that path And not have to, uh, subsidize twenty-five percent for affordable And just go with a regular straight fifty-five and older project, so There's a lot going on, the only talk about the forty R, and it wasn't even discussed at all in detail, was that The town would simply get money.
Okay.
But it never went any further than comment.
Okay, that's, that's great, because I, I, at this point, I just think it's so soon in the process, it'd be great to have all options on the table.
Well, I think they are, in fact, the first time that G F I came in with any Concept of what they might put in there. Uh, they had shown us, uh, everything within the current zoning, uh, it, it had over fifty-five holiday, housing. Uh, had, uh, Uh, some commercial, it had some, uh, Apartments, I forget exactly, but I mean, everything that they showed us was within current zoning, which is always another option that they might Uh, exercise.
Yep, okay, great.
All right, anyway, Jane, what else would you like to talk about?
That's it, I think Sandy had a question.
Okay.
Hi, yes. So I had a question, because just to play off what Jane just said, and your responses, um, What is the product of the grant that you mentioned, Rich?
The product, if it's a forty R, It would be the zoning bylaw that That needs to be created, to create a forty R district. Which includes, um, design guidelines, so in a forty R district There can be housing types, fifty-five and over housing, single-family homes, multifamily housing. That's all to be decided, uh, that, that's, that's part of the, the planning of it, to decide What may s- make sense or mi- not make sense. Uh, so The, in terms of the, the product is, it, one is the zoning bylaw that Would go to town meeting, um, that would be either voted up or voted down. Um, as well as a design guidelines that would be part of the forty R district. And then an application Uh, that would need to go to Department Housing Community Development to make sure that it meets the, the criteria To be a forty R As well, I mean, there is It won't be done in a vacuum necessarily, if there's, if there is interest, we'll have to make Speak to the state, say, okay, does this Meet the criteria of the forty R program and either say Yay or nay, um.
Did you get the, um, Did you get the forty R from G F I, is that what happened?
No.
I don't know anything about this.
No, no, the forty, the forty R was in the grant application in, in, hey.
Okay, so, is any part of the grant gonna look at the Possibility that the site turns out to be not suitable for housing? Wh- what are you gonna do then, could we, could they make some Passive recreation or wildlife corridor, or even another solar field? But, um, you just spent a lot of time talking about one, but wh- what happens if The site is not good for housing, are they gonna present a Plan B? I think it would be A good idea to use some of that money to pre- present a Plan B.
The Plan B, so in terms of
There's always the warehouse.
Is
Well, you don't want that either, no, I mean, you don't want that, because you're gonna need lots of water And people work there, so it'd be the same situation.
Well, I think, I think you have to go into, let me, uh, Paul, John, let me say this. I think the, the problem, or the, the The situation that we're trying to accomplish is, one, we have a contaminated site. Um, that needs to be assessed and then cleaned up. And that we need to have a, a vehicle to pay for that. Um, that makes sense. And, and so, how that comes out in the end, we don't have the answer to that yet, but To, to do something passively, you know, it's gotta make sense economically, you know, so If solar made sense economically, they probably would do it, um, if it ma- you know what I'm saying, so They're not, they're not bound to anything in terms of They may, like John said, they may not want to do a forty.
I mean, this, this grant is, uh, superfluous to what's gonna happen, this is a minor thing. They're gonna tell us what they're gonna do, they're gonna figure out a project that makes sense. And then if it's within local zoning, they'll go through a planning board with a proper process. I mean, they're not gonna be told what to do or how to do it, and if you're offered suggestions, I'm sure they have their own planning team. So it, I, I, right now, if there was an owner in place, we'd have worried and taken the grant. I mean, we don't decide what's gonna go on that property, the owners do. And they're the ones that are gonna understand what they need to do to get their money back. And it's gonna be something that's gonna pay for the cleanup And the taking down of the building and give them some profit, so I don't see how this grant is gonna have any play in the thing. To be honest with you, and it, it's so much of being made of this grant, then, jeez, as a developer of property, I just don't see where it's going. Because they're gonna come to us and tell us what their thoughts are, and we're gonna up or down it, and it's gonna go from there.
Yeah, I, I, I do agree, I mean, I question the value of the grant at this point in the process, because we don't even know.
If I own a piece of land, someone's gonna tell me what to do, no way, nothing happened.
Yeah, but what could the town get out of it?
If they're smart, they're probably gonna go with existing zoning, because the zoning on that property The, the team that did this on the town's, uh, Economic Development Committee Did an outstanding job, it allows for so many things, and a lot of the things that allows for Show, uh, have a profit return that probably can pay for all this cleanup. Because me personally, my hope is that they stick around and clean up this property, because you know what? And I've been on this thing now for seven years with different people, this is the best chance I've ever seen to getting this property cleaned up. So I think it behooves us to listen to them and work with them and try to do things the right way, all assuming That the comprehensive review that I heard from the, uh, PIP meeting That they're gonna clean everything up that has to be, so I was kind of encouraged by that. Because other than that, I don't see this property, it'll be in the Lawrence Street, it'll sit there contaminated forever.
I know.
So we're gonna try to get, get this to happen, you know, and so far Uh, it's starting off, in my regard, i- i- in a good sh- in a good shape, because at least they're receptive to what we're looking to do.
So the devil advocate in terms of this grant, in terms of where we're at, I would, you know, I would say, one is to go through the process as we, we discussed forty R. And two, in a few different ways, number one, um, As I mentioned before, my email correspondence in the twenty seventeen Housing Production Plan This site was identified where, to help towards reaching our ten percent affordable housing. To make meaningful Achievement towards that goal, you need to look at multifamily housing that's rental To make meaningful Strides towards that goal. As a forty R, you can do that. And you can receive financial benefits to create a district. You can require affordability equivalent to forty B To make all the rental units count. You can Have Not have to have three-bedroom units, which people raise concerns about impacts on the town, as it may be more Enticing to potentially people with families. Where forty B, you have to have a minimum of ten percent affordable housing. Um, there is a financial incentive payment for each unit produced through the district.
But, Rich, you know, I'm
And, and, well, I just, you know, whatever. The permitting process goes through the permitting board that's on this call tonight. And they're not overriding all your local regulations. So Just I would suggest be open to think about it, because I know Sandy, you were heavily involved in You know, in Lawrence Street, well, that was a forty B. And people raised concerns how it was overriding our local wetland bylaw, how was overriding our, our local bylaws, well The forty R is an option to consider whereby local bylaws are followed To be able to achieve the same end result, that's all, um, And that's why it's important to give a consideration.
But it's very short, if they say, no, we don't want it, it's done, that's it.
That's right.
I mean, they probably will want a forty R than we ever will, but if they don't want it, that's it. They probably have their own plan.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree, I'm just saying, that's not
Before the neighbors get all concerned and upset You gotta find out at least what they're talking about, they, I'm sure they have a great idea what they wanna do. They bought the property and they're going this far, spending all this money, I'm sure they know. But, you know, if I had, like I said, hey, someone come to me and talk about how I'm gonna develop my property, I wouldn't even listen to them, let alone give them information.
See, I guess part of the concern was, because when I watch See, I guess part of the concern was, because when I watched that January eleventh planning board meeting, I heard Rich say. That G F I asked to um to ha- to have the scope of the work changed so it would focus on forty R. I mean, I heard it, it, I've listened to it several times. So my impression was that Rich is pushing for forty R, so I assume planning board was too. Um, so that was my concern, because I just think it's too early to push for any one thing.
Totally right.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed. Oh, so, um. On the air right now, I apologize if I misled people in terms of how I characterized. Um, that conversation. Um, the conversation was, if you. Are looking at forty R, which was in the original scope of work, um, why not? Have a process where you could have a forty R at the end to evaluate it as an end product.
I think where Jane's off, Rich, you never talked with G F I about this grant, right?
I did. That's what she's referring to.
Okay.
I reported to the planning board.
Right, okay.
So, there was, again, there, it was. Something that if it makes sense for the town, wanted to get something at the end of it. If we're gonna be going through a planning process, which again, we are, because forty R was part of that planning consideration, so.
Okay, uh, anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, well, hearing none, then, uh, what's the next item on the update list? Rich is the fire station.
Nothing for tonight.
Nothing for tonight.
They'll be in the March, March eight.
Fair enough. Any other uh items you'd like to uh bring to the board's attention tonight, Rich?
Uh, I think, no, I don't have anything else this evening.
Okay, uh, any board member have any other business this evening? Betsy, whoop, I see a hand up from Betsy. I presume that's uh. Betsy Whitney, but I'm not sure.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, Betsy. Go ahead.
Okay, well, of course, it took me five minutes to remember how to put the hand up. Um, just want to say, um, that the the uh discussion item that Jane. Brought up tonight and the discussion that followed was very, very good. To hear and the input from Sandy and and I, and John, I I really feel that. Um, I learned a lot and uh. We have so many moving pieces going on at the same time with the how, the Southwood site. Um, so I'm very grateful that Jane spoke so eloquently about where we're. At and what we are thinking and what our uh uh comeaways are. And we're still in the process of getting on the same page. I'm grateful for this meeting tonight. I'm glad I. Heard the discussion, planning board. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, um. Any uh additional business this evening that we should discuss? Hearing none, then uh the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn, but with one comment, I I have. Uh, requested you hang around for a minute after we adjourn. Uh, okay, so chair requests a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, so uh taking the roll call vote, Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Waddleton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.